Okay, LLC Abdul El Anani, who some of you already know. Who are going to take you in detail across the plans that have been submitted, the architectural plans, and explain in detail what the applicant seeks to approve and amend.
Can we just swear you in? So your testimony about to get this forward, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
Do you have anybody else who's gonna provide testimony?
I might, so I'll swear it in.
Might as well swear it in.
So you swear the testimony about to get this forward, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to have Mr. Abdul El Anani take the stand in order to testify to the submitted plans. Five.
So the plans that were filed are for, you are supposed to go through the planning board because of we're adding a new kitchen exhaust set. The existing business does not have any kitchen exhaust set, and that's on here.
Can I ask you a couple questions on that? I put a report together.
Okay, just really quick.
You want to just run through Michael's report?
Yeah, so let's just mark, we'll mark as A1, the application and supporting documentation. A2 will be the notice, and then PB1 will be Mr. Cole's report, which is going to address the applicant's going to address dated January 31, 2023.
So Abdul, we have this foot, and we have the external line, the duck, one by two or two by one up the exterior of the wall. And then there's a parapet, and the plans show that he's gonna, the top of the exhaust fan will be lower than the parapet. If that's the case, I can't see any need for visual screening because of the parapet. That's what the drawings show. There's an offset, and there's a PDC roof feeder that he's gonna have to go around to get in there. And I had a comment of painting the duck the same color as the brick, so it kind of blends in. Because it is somewhat visible from the municipal parking lot. It's the Verizon V, it kind of, so you have that. And then I had a question from the intake, intake fan, it's on the drawings located right outside the window. It was not running the intake off. So I had a question from him to make sure it's code, make sure it's UCC code compliant. Because I don't want to go through all this and find out from the construction office that you can't do it that way. Okay. So then I had a question about the hours of operation for the establishment. And I only brought that up because the stand data, sound data exceeds the limits. We're gonna have to drill down that. And I don't, I'm not recommending at all that the restaurant be limited at all for sound data. We'll deal with that. But the information given is in sounds, and technically it doesn't comply, but the question says what distance? It's always a distance issue. So we will address that if we can get any more sound, the data's in sounds, just so that it complies. There's some windows there, the ducts going between.
Well, we can also, there's sound maintenance measures that can be applied.
Yes.
So I guess that's my question, if the data shows it does not comply, then the alternative would be that they are agreeing to install whatever sort of mitigation measures would make it comply?
Yeah, sound attenuation, if it's needed, I don't think it will be, but yes.
We're not in overnight operations, right?
So he's got the commercial kitchen going in, this is a fondue type of establishment. And the, I had a question about grease and solid waste, and how are you going to dispose of these things? So I don't see any dumpsters out there, you're gonna use the?
So it'll be in the back where the municipal parking lot is, right in that side of the building. It will be fenced off with mass, and there will be metal containers with cupboards that are in the back. Truck will be coming, not so many back there, it was five or six times a week, almost every day of our operation.
This is a question for Greg.
Is there room out there to put a screen in that building, it's almost the property line?
So there is?
Let's just have your name for the record, I know which floor you live on.
Greg Storms.
Great, thank you.
PGM management.
And you are the?
Owner. Management member. So it's a 190 West Main Street, as everyone knows, is the old melting pot. And when we built the restaurant, we had, we put up a barrier for the dumpster enclosure. And I recommended we put the dumpster, we have a three yard dumpster there currently. That services 190 West Main Street, the residence upstairs, and it's gonna serve as Abdul's restaurant. And we talked about, multiple times, we can, we deal with our prior valley disposal. They will be doing it as many times as we need a week. Right now, we have twice a week for the residents upstairs. If we need to add two or three times, maybe every day during the week, we can do that. As far as waste, as far as oil's concerned, there's an alleyway that's also blocked by the garbage enclosure, where we could have oils or things like that to put in, as well as recyclables. So everything is fenced off in the alleyway between the melting pot and Ax-66 North Doughty Avenue.
Okay, so that's the one on, yeah, right?
Yes, the one on Doughty. It's the alleyway coming up right past 6 North to get you into the mini block, lot. It's right on the right hand side, there's a dumpster enclosure there.
That's where the residential units were, the addition was going, going, right? Right there?
I'm sorry?
The addition, the apartments on the back? That's what we're talking about?
No, talking about the one they did, the other apartments, the other one.
That's on 98. 190 has been done for about 15 years.
Okay.
So there, there's nine.
It's next to the Mason, so.
It's next to the, it's next to the? It's next to the?
Verizon.
Verizon building. Where we're putting this fan there, it's actually very hard to be visible from the parking lot. I guess if you walk around the corner and stuck your head out, you could see it. As far as painting, it's the same color. Abdul has no problem with that, I'm fine with that. The intake louver, Mike, that's done there for, is a makeup air. That's basically what that is, is a makeup air that goes into the existing HVAC system. And I think that will be sufficient for the makeup air that's gonna take out this, that's gonna be needed for the exhaust fan. I'm sure Abdul will have all the calculations for you, but as far as the sounds are concerned, on the, on top of the roof, you know, it's on, it's way up, I don't think that'll be an issue either. As far as noise, I don't know the, your variables, but there is no, the only thing is residential apartments below that might be affected by it. Unless the Verizon people work at night, I think we'll be fine.
So we got, we took care of the grease, grease and the solid waste. I had a couple of questions, just resetting some pavers, which are waiting, not replacing them, resetting them, and some spacy. And the question that you raised before to me was, I just do a site inspection somewhere out there. So there's some pavers that just walk in front of the melting pot.
That'll level up.
What's that?
That, that'll be leveled up.
Yeah, the question's just leveling up, not replacing anything, just, just, we're filling it in, putting it back down, so we get rid of the weight.
Is that the responsibility of the DSA?
I, well, that's what, I was trying not to go there, Greg's position it is, and the question, he'll put 1990. And I think the Bureau takes the position as responsibility of the property owner. And I'm just trying to get the level, and that gets in the weeds for, you know, another one of the subjects?
We'll take care of that. We also have approvals from the ARB to redo the whole front facade.
Okay.
And some of you, I think, were present, Chairman was present, I think, Mike, you were present as well, for the front facade that we're going to be doing. Just to keep the board up to speed, is we're gonna be redoing the whole front facade. They're gonna be folding doors that are gonna be able to open out onto Main Street, so to allow customers to hopefully dine on Main Street as well. And so we're redoing the whole front facade. We're gonna be moving the entrance from, to the restaurant further east, about 10 feet further east. So it's gonna be all windows in the front. We have ARB approval, I think the board actually agree with the ARB approval. And we are going to be starting that construction as soon as we get approvals here. We're gonna be getting started on that construction and redoing the whole front facade.
So that alcove that is this now will be gone?
That will be, it will be moved further east. So it'll be a whole front facade that'll be done with opening, the windows that, the doors that actually open hole by hole. Very similar to the brewery, very similar to how they do it, so.
More lighting than it is now.
So what's on the plans now is the old?
Yes, my dream is the old one.
Okay.
It's the old one, yes. I forget who was at the ARB being discussed.
Same old character.
Okay. So that's just to tell the board what we're gonna be doing for the restaurant. We're excited for Abdul to come. It's gonna be a very nice, high-end Mediterranean restaurant. We're excited for them to come, we're excited for them to get started. The melting pot, as you all know, has been vacant for about three, almost four years now. And Abdul's gonna be putting a lot of, a lot of money and decorations into the building. We have cut it to date, and we're looking forward for him to get started and to open up as soon as possible.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Well, I know the applicant would like to get started prior to memorialization. The resolution should the board approve it. So I, you know, as long as, in the past, the board's entertained this, as long as he knows the risk and signs something or something to that extent.
Right, yeah, as long as, as long as he assumes the risk, any event there's a change during, you know, between now and when we memorialize.
Right.
And what we can say is that we have no objection to him proceeding in that regard. We can't authorize, we can't direct, we can't do anything like that, just say we have no objection.
Right, and I might need something from you for the construction office, because he might not get a permit until the resolution, otherwise.
That was my question, is that can the construction official act on it with that stipulation?
I think?
I know we've done it before, we, the civil demolition, I think.
It's two weeks, it's a lot of time.
Yeah.
You know, we can't make the decision to the construction official. All we can say is that we don't object to the applicant applying or that reviewing permits or plans or anything of that nature.
Do we have permits in right now?
Nothing yet.
The permits for, for the renovations, I thought you have them all ready to go though, right?
I have the plans, everything was in the plans, but nothing, no permits actually from.
We don't have such permits yet, but we've submitted.
Right, so what I'm saying is, I know the construction officials.
We sent pavers and they never sent back because of the planning board.
So I'm just trying to get something in the files, so you're entertained. With nothing in the file, we've had some issues with no resolution getting worked on.
So we'll just put that in the resolution.
Yeah.
We'll put it in the resolution, we have admitted it from tonight's meeting. So you can see exactly what's going on, we got the videotape, we got everything, the resolution will say we have no objection to the applicant.
Could that resolution be ready for our next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
And we have a permit ready to go for the front facade, which we're probably gonna be starting next week.
Oh, that's why, okay, so that's a separate set of plans.
That's a separate set of plans, yes, that's a separate set of plans.
Great, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Are you good on the memorialization?
When we talk about the south side of Main Street, we hope that investment there would spur, would sort of re-kickstart the north side. I mean, we've done well from Davenport Street East, but Davenport Street West is just limping. And I think that because of what's happening across the street, this is, this is a natural, a natural result of that. And I, I hope it can continue all the way down to, to Doughty. We can't wait for it to open.
Thank you.
He has several restaurants in New York City, he has a great following, and we've been to his restaurants, and we're excited for him to come to town. Thank you.
Good, okay, we don't have a lot of conditions?
We don't. All the conditions and comments in Cole's report, I can go through each one, they're all underlined in the report. We'll attach the report as the exhibit to the resolution. I can go and put them all on the record, but again, as long as the board understands that as they are outlined in this report, is what the resolution is gonna be contingent upon. Sound mitigation, if necessary, if the decimal levels come back as being inappropriate. The applicant agrees to level the sidewalk in accordance with, the Bureau does have an ordinance 150-28. The government's responsibility for those things, and will put in language stating that the board has no objection to the applicant proceeding with the permit application and review prior to memorialization of the resolution. Well, I'll put that in.
So what you just said.
Give me a second.
Okay, yeah. At this point, I'll open it up to the public, forgot to do that. Any comment, questions, during that, we'll close the public session.
Really quick, you were trying to say something before, did you have any questions at any time?
I was just, I just wanted Mr. Cameron to clarify what he mentioned, the assumption of risk for the applicant. To just clarify to the applicant what that would entail, so he'd aware.
So essentially, once your resolution is memorialized, there's a 45 day time period that anyone can come and file an objection to your application. We're not hearing anybody here tonight, but that is a time period that anyone can come file an objection, a few full permits, a mutual work, anything of that nature. And it's unclear as to where that objection and potential litigation ends up going. You could be at risk of having to pull all of that out, of losing whatever is associated with it. There wouldn't be any change to the ordinances, the timing of application rules, so that wouldn't be an issue. That would really be your, your only impediment.
Okay. Go, go, please.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Broom?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Krestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Addicks?
Yes.
Good luck.
Yes, congrats.
Thank you, Addicks.
Get those permits in.
Thank you.
There's a long one, it goes in that office.
Stay out of California.
Okay, next up, we have 254 Altamont.
He's in Miami.
Yeah, he's in Miami.
Hello, my name is Giovanni Manilio. I'm the current property owner of 254 Altamont Place, and currently reside at 25 Fairmont in Somerville, New Jersey. I'll be with you guys tonight for a minor subdivision of 254 Altamont. It's a fully conforming minor subdivision, just to give you a little background.
I swear again.
Oh, sorry.
Your testimony about to get this forward is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I did, sure. So just to give a little background, keep it quick. So I moved into Somerville, first place, in 2007 on Fairmont, it was a two-family house. Lived in one neighborhood to the other side, it was a five-year plan, and from there, I've been a buy house and living there. But that's turned into a 15-year plan at this point, maybe 16 years. Since then, I've accumulated a couple other investment properties, another one in Somerville, on West High Street. And I started my own business about two years ago as a civil engineer, and started my business in Somerville as well, my office is on Grove Street. So for the past year or so, I've been looking for properties. My dream is to build my own house. Unfortunately, in Somerville, there's not too many lots that are available. So I started exploring a bridge water, some properties in Bridge Water. But then again, I wanted to kind of be closer to everything, I don't want to be far away, plus downtown, walkable. And I actually saw two places, one on West Cliff and one on Altamont, I was chasing as well as a property to move into. Both the hot market, those kind of fell through as well. And then 254 Altamont came on the market. I got excited, I took a look at it, and being an engineer, I kind of did a little homework, I was like, wait, then I could, I could subdivide this thing and, and actually build my dream house. And it's perfect, it's on the west side of town, it's in a great neighborhood. So yeah, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. So I closed in the house in September. Took me a while to get the subdivision put together, a lot of it has to do with the surveying, I guess that side of town is a little off.
A little wonky over there.
So.
The whole town is a little off.
So I think we surveyed probably half the town in order to get to where we're at. So it's a fully conforming lot. My plan is to actually build my own house on the West Summit side. I have no issues with building the sidewalks, putting in the street trees, I want this to be my place. And my last question is.
So the board has the ability, and Mike can jump into, this is classified as a minor subdivision pursuant to 102-4 of the ordinance, and the board has the ability to either report this matter to the subdivision committee, and have them review it and make a recommendation back to the board that the board can adopt, or the board can look at the application tonight, since it is fully conforming, they'll make two things or two design waivers, and make a determination tonight, so that enough to approve or not accept.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we can't do it tonight. There's, there's no reason, and the two issues that we have are sidewalks and street trees. And to me, it doesn't make any sense to deal with sidewalks until we have some ideas of where the driveway is gonna go with the new structure. And as far as the street trees go, this is probably a weakness.
I'm assuming that's for the, the new lot, the street trees are for the?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that as well.
But then I do believe you're in the bluestone protection zone, I think even the new lot is.
Yes.
So when he puts the sidewalks, he's gonna have to die, and we're gonna have to go through the simulation, is what the Bureau typically uses. When bluestones not there. It used to be that the DPW had bluestone available to use, but I think that's gone, no crap, it's gone. Right, so I think, John, you're gonna, we're gonna have to sort out, do some dye, some, basically concrete.
My goal is actually trying to do bluestone if I can afford it at the end of the project.
We'll check, check with, check with the, if they still have, I guess they got all these sidewalks from Princeton, where Princeton pulled up all their bluestone.
You can't just buy bluestone?
You can, but it's pretty pricey. So first check, first check, see if it's not sitting there waiting for somebody to use it before you go in. It's really, I mean, it's like good thing, bluestone.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's my goal, if I can screen the bluestone, if we can get it, that's what I would like to do. And just to ease everybody, it's not gonna be like a modern house, like driven by the neighborhood, it's gonna fit the character. It's gonna be colonial.
Cool.
It's like it's somewhere for a while.
It will be oriented towards West Summit?
I believe the way I'm looking at it right now is gonna be oriented towards West Summit with the driveway on.
That makes sense.
Well, speaking, speaking for myself, I'm glad to see you remain in town.
Thank you.
And the block plan, John, you're okay with submitting a block plan, just to get the, you, you know the routine?
Yeah, the final engineer.
Yeah, you got final engineer.
So do we vote on this? Do we?
It's a subdivision, yeah.
Okay, I vote that we vote to approve with the conditions of the sidewalk and street trees.
Sure. Okay, we'll put that in there, because the board won't presumably see this again, unless the size of the home ends up being one that requires variance. We'll put it in there, agrees that after time, then he applies those building permits, he'll address those issues as well.
And I'm sure John's gonna submit the subdivision by D, so he can give us a copy of the report stamp from the clerk's office. We'll put that in the file. Reset the property corners, the normal deal?
Yeah.
All right, and, and just for, you know, purposes again of the record, so we've got A1, the application. There is no notice here, so then we'll just mark this PB1, Mike's letter. Or really, what it is, is a completeness review that sets forth the conditions that we're gonna impose, and that is dated January 29, 2023, A.
I just didn't see any for a report on this, like this double the up with the completeness, to save a couple dollars, you guys willing?
Yeah.
We got it all geared up to the public, so anybody from the public have any comments, questions? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public session.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Broom?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Krestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Addicks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have 50 Kirby M.
Good evening, for the record, I'm John Jennings, from the law firm of Allen, Spitzer. As the board is aware, I'm representing 50 Kirby Burger Renewal LLC, who appeared before this board back in 2018, I'm not sure how many it knew who were on the board at that time. But during the public hearing, there was much discussion with regard to the sprinkler system to be put into the 15 buildings, code requires the 13R, and it suggested by the board engineer and fire official to have to go to the 13, which is a much more expensive system with more bells and whistles. In our opinion, after several discussions throughout the public hearing, it was sort of ended up in agreement that there'd be sort of a combo, that we would either do the 13R with some additional sprinkler heads, or we would do the 13, but we would make that decision when we got to actually pulling building permits. And so that's what my applicant client walked away with thinking. And so in pursuit of that, on August 15, 2022, my client did send a letter to the planning board, basically outlining what I just said, and basically said, you know, what we're gonna do is we're gonna stick with the 13R, but we're gonna enhance it by adding sprinkler heads in the closets and the utility rooms, et cetera. And then he did ask, you know, if you, if you're asking, hearing anything to the contrary, we'll assume this approach is satisfactory, but we would appreciate hearing from you confirming the planning board satisfied this approach. Apparently, the letter was never responded to, and then one of my client went to file the building permits. It was flagged, and said, well, wait a minute, we think you have to do more than that. And that's where lies the confusion, because if you go to section 22 at page 29 of the resolution, the language that ends up in the resolution is as follows. The applicant shall have the option of installing either the NFPA 13R system with additional sprinklers in the unoccupied areas, or NFPA 13 system. So it did leave us the option, but the confusion comes with the words unoccupied areas, because that includes the attic. When you go to the attic, you actually go to a different type of system, which would be the 13, because you need to have a dry system. You can't have a wet system in an attic. And so we're really here, basically, to either clarifying that paragraph and/or seek relief from it, because my client has spent a significant amount of money with the 13R system and adding additional sprinkler systems. And I think we also added a loop system and some extra stuff outside on the site per request from the bureau officials. And so I have the three witnesses who can talk to this much better than me here with me this evening, the architect, the person who designed the sprinkler system, and the person who's going to disrupt everything. They can explain to you in better terms what the differences are, what the client has done. I mean, I know at the end of the day, it's like public health and safety is concerned, and we believe that, you know, this goes above and beyond the building itself, from the things that the client has already added into. The building's at great expense, and we hope that, you know, one of the things that is significant is when you go back to the old transcripts, and it was the board chairman who, you know, really wanted us to think about it, and what he does say in the transcript at page 102, he goes, I'm sure firemen are should be very happy to help you determine where those additional heads might be. We're talking about a minimal cost to the 13R system. So now, here we are, we've done what we think was supposed to be done in pursuant to the transcript, but I really admit, the actual condition in the resolution is a little ambiguous. And so we're here to let you know what we have done that's gone well above and beyond the 13R system, and why we believe that it should be sufficient, as we have submitted the building permits, and we're hoping that we can either get relief or clarification from that section 22 of the resolution.
So to Deidre's point, what they're actually here to do tonight is, as Donna indicated, either get clarity on that condition and what unoccupied means, or in the alternative, amend that condition to specifically state that they're not required to sprinkler attic areas in connection with the approval. You've seen situations before where we've been asked to amend conditions. We know that there is a provision whereby conditions that are not deemed by the board to be significant and would have changed their mind can be amended without public hearing. The applicant and Donna has agreed and did notice and publish for this in the anticipation that that could end up being a question, so that they can proceed tonight. So what we'll do, so they can go forward, we'll mark as A1, the letter that Donna referenced from the TFI Properties dated August 15, 2022. That was the one that basically made the request for what it is that the board's looking to do tonight. We'll mark as A2, the publication and the notice that allows this board to proceed tonight. And then we'll mark as A3, the resolution that she referenced, which is the prior resolution of the board. That was dated December 27, 2018. Nope, October 24, 2018. It was accepted and consented to by the applicant on December 27, 2018. That's all I have left.
Okay.
So with that, I would like just to call our first witness and have him sworn in, and he will go through what he started with the 13R system. So Tom Brennan? And we can swear everybody in, he said he had three. Oh, we have three, you want to do them all, John? Sure, so line up, gentlemen, go, swear in or stand up where you're at. So he can say where you are, it's fine. Do you swear your testimony about to get this forward?
Do you swear your testimony? About to give this board the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, yes, I do.
And then you just state and spell your name even most possible.
Okay, so we're gonna have to have Mr. Brennan sworn in.
Who is going to swear in?
Oh, just a few. All right, so Mr. Brennan, if you could, just for the benefit of the board, give your background qualifications.
And just spell your, your name.
B R E N N A N, um, name of firm is Thomas State Brennan Architects. And I have a master's of architecture from the New York Institute of Technology. I have been practicing architecture for 35 years. I'm licensed in New Jersey for over 35 years. And I've been before this board before at other hearings that there was, so.
And your license is still active and validated?
Yes.
Accept his qualifications?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So with respect to the 15 buildings in the Kirby Village project, what type of sprinkler system is required by code?
Well, what is required by code is a NFPA 13R system. And this building is a two-story building, and so therefore that is what the requirement is in the TCA in the state of New Jersey building code. So that's why we designed this, this project too, and we have met all the criteria that is required for a building or project of this size.
So when you say a 13R system, can you just kind of explain what is a 13R system?
Well, it's a sprinkler system that primarily, there's a lot of the technical stuff that other engineers could probably get into or discuss more. But it basically is a sprinkler system where there are heads in the entire unit per se, in the building. So in the living room, the dining room, the kitchen, the bedrooms, they all are required to have a sprinkler head. And, and it's all looped together, and there's a panel box and some of the other technical stuff that the, that's on the building. So if there's a 10-unit building, each unit will have its own sprinkler protection, I guess you could say.
And then during the 2018 public hearing and in some of the review letters, you recall there was a request from the borough consultants for the applicant to install the 13 system instead of the 13R system, despite the code requiring only the 13 system, correct?
That was correct.
And if you could just describe the differences between the 13 and the 13R?
The 13 system, it's the same type of system, except the 13 system, you must sprinkle the attic space. Go up in the attic space and do a dry system up in the attic space. And primarily with the 13 system, you can omit rooms that are 55 square feet or below. But, you know, again, we're meeting the code of a 13R because that's what the building code required at the time, so.
And do you recall the, I just read in the opening comment made by the board chairman with respect to that when we were thinking about just adding additional sprinkler heads and a minimum cost, what did you take away from that comment?
Yes, what I understood at the meeting with, that I attended, was that it was brought up that, well, in lieu of doing this 13 system and doing the entire attic, could you just go in, could the applicant go in and just put sprinkler heads in the bathrooms and closet areas that are not required during the 13R system? And that's what I understood that we were doing. We were just, you know, agreeing to the fact of, yes, we would go take the extra step and put sprinkler heads in the bathrooms, in the closet spaces, but we were not having to do the attic space. Because the attic space is draft stopped anyway. There's a protection up in the attic space of, of having draft stops and separating the, if a fire were to start, it would be contained up in the attic space.
Okay, and do you also recall at the hearing that I actually made the following statement with this request to the 13 system? And I'm quoting from the transcript, because we discussed a little bit amongst ourselves with respect to the request for the sprinkler system. It was a board suggestion, it was the board's suggestion, the board chairman's suggestion, doing the 13R without these sprinklers. But we'd like to keep open the option of actually doing what was suggested. So either do what the board chairing had suggested and what has been passed in the review letter, or just decide when we go to actually build it, which we'll do. Do you recall that?
Yes, some of it, yeah.
Okay, and at the conclusion of the hearing, when you left the room, was it your understanding that the sprinklers must necessarily be added to the attics of the 15 residential building, consistent with the 13 system?
No, my understanding was that we were going to add sprinkler heads in the bathrooms and closet spaces, and we would comply with the other aspects of the 13R system.
And when you submitted the building, the plans of the building permits, that's what we have?
That's what we have, yeah. We're meeting the code with the 13R with the additional heads that are in the closets and the bathrooms.
Okay, and we'll have somebody else get into the specific details of the design, if you're not the sprinkler designer, if you're correct. Okay, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Brennan.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is John Charke, please? Having been duly sworn already, can you please give the board the benefit of your background and qualifications?
Uh, my name is John Charke. I'm the president of Charke Engineering. My company provides mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection engineering services. I have a bachelor's degree in engineering, and I have 27 years' experience. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, will the board accept this qualification?
Yes.
Thank you. And your firm designed the sprinkler system for the Kirby Village project, correct?
Yes.
And again, what are the main differences between the NFPA 13 and the NFPA 13R system? And maybe do you want me to hand out your exhibit that you're gonna refer to momentarily? So we're gonna mark as A4. Can you just describe that for the record?
So 13R system is a sprinkler system for low-rise residential buildings up to four stories in height. So this project is two stories in height, so the applicable standard NFPA is 13R. The difference between 13R and 13, a 13 is a more commercial system. It would be applicable to buildings over four stories in height or other building uses such as schools, offices, other, other building, non-residential.
Okay, and what they passed around to the board members, marked as A4, is basically a fire sprinkler plan. And you've indicated on each of the sheets of where we've added additional sprinklers, which were not required under the 13R system. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and I appreciate if you actually could walk the board members through each of the pages, because I think it's significant and show you just how much the applicant took this very seriously and looked at all those places where we could add additional sprinkler system heads. And it's, it's actually a lot. We add it all up, so I think it would be appropriate for the record to be clear for you to go through each work plan.
So the 13R standard does not require sprinklers in bathrooms that are under 55 square feet and also closets that are under 24, 24 square feet. So what we have done here is we have provided additional sprinkler heads in those exempted areas. So the illustration here, the first building is building type A. And the highlighted pink blocks, those are the rooms, the closets, that we provided extra sprinklers above and beyond the 13R standard. Second, second page. Uh, the yellow hatching are bathrooms that did not require sprinklers under 13R, but we have, we will provide sprinklers in those bathrooms. And similarly, the, the pink rectangular shapes are the closets that will receive additional sprinklers that were not required by the standard.
So in summary, though, there's six total buildings that are like this type, the second floor. And then on the second floor, there's 16 additional closet sprinklers times six buildings, so 96 additional for this floor. And then on the second floor, eight additional bathroom sprinklers times six is another 48. So as we're going through each of the buildings and every floor, you can see we're adding a significant, significant amount of additional sprinkler heads above and beyond what's required in the 13R. So again, going to the third sheet, could you describe what did that show you?
Right, this is building type B. Again, the rectangular pink shaded areas are closets that would not have been required to have sprinklers, that we are providing sprinklers. So 14 additional closets on this level times seven buildings, 98 additional sprinklers on the subway. Going to the second floor for building change, next is building type B. Again, the yellow boxes are the bathrooms that would not have required sprinklers, but we are providing sprinklers in those rooms. And the pink rectangular boxes are the closets.
And again, total additional?
Total additional, second floor, 18 additional closet sprinklers times seven buildings, 126 on site. And then the bathrooms, 12 additional times seven buildings, 84 on site. And then the final building type is C, which again, the pink shaded box are the closets that we provided sprinklers that weren't required under 13R. So 10 closets times two buildings, 20 on site. And then the final sheet represents the second floor, building type C. Yellow boxes are bathrooms where we're providing sprinklers and pink shaded boxes, additional closet sprinklers.
So in total, if you were to add up all of the additional sprinkler heads, did we get well over 500?
576 across the 15 buildings.
Okay.
Additional sprinklers.
Now, based on that and what we already have in the building, do you believe additional heads are all, are warranted in the attic of the 15 buildings? And if not, can you describe one more?
Uh, the 13R standard does not require sprinklers in the attic. So thus, could not be applicable to this property.
Okay, and if the sprinkler heads were to be added to the system we designed for the residence, what additional features must be added to each building, which would not otherwise be required?
So basically a, a separate piping system that's dry, because it can't have water in an attic. There's no heat in the attic, so it's a dry system. There's a compressor that maintains air in the pipes, and there's a dry pipe valve. Those are kind of the components involved with the dry system.
We would need it. That or an additional cost? Okay, um, that's all the questions I have for the sprinkler and sprinkling system.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, I do have a question. What does our fire official feel about the trade-off? Has that been discussed at all with our fire department?
The, the question here is what we intended when we put that condition in. Neither the fire official or this board can require greater than the 13R system. They agreed to an upgraded 13R system. But we can't require a 13, and we can't require more than what they volunteered to do. Correct me if I'm wrong, Karen.
That, that's, that's correct, and the issue came down to the transcript language and this unoccupied. It's really a definition of what we meant by the unoccupied basis, whether we thought the attic was included in that.
The board's been asking for the attics, and I understand that, but basis for granting some of the variance could be the enhanced sprinkler system. So that's, 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 that's what's driving this. In every report, the last 10 years, we've requested a 13 or enhanced 13R system. And as, then you've said, how can you ask that because the code doesn't require? If there's variance that's associated with the application, the enhanced safety is some of the proof for granting the variance.
So the question is, did we define what an enhanced 13R is?
Well, we left it up. I think the attorney's actually right. That language was only comprised of, you know, that language is what we stuck with. And the question is, how do you handle, is the attic included in that? And I, I only disagree with any of the testimonies. It's a totally different system. The question is, and it goes back to what happened with 40 Haynes, if the attic, if fire gets in the attic. I understand there's draft spots and all that, but the concern is you've got cable TV, you put holes in the sheetrock, and you can lose the building very quick. And that's always been, that's why we're having this discussion, because in my reports, I always say that language, a 13 or 13R to address the unoccupied. I mean, my understanding is a 13R system is to get the app, the tenants out. A 13 system is to protect the structure. Mark, do I have that right? Is that definitely what how it works? John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, they're different, they're different standards.
Right, once you get people out, once it's protective structure.
NFPA evaluates risks and studies.
So it goes back to the analysis. It's always been the analysis of the attic.
And there was testimony. We all went back and we looked at the transcripts and really took a look at notes and things like that. And there were references to all of them there. There were attic references, there were closet references, there were bathroom references. And, you know, ultimately in an attempt to try and give some flexibility, that's how we came up with the language. And there, admittedly, there was no exception. Unoccupied areas would be exception of the attic. That was not in there. So that's basically why, why we're here. I just have a couple of questions. John, is there gonna be any non-combustible or fire retardant wood or non-combustible insulation used in the attic areas during construction?
That would be a question.
Yeah, Tom, do you want to introduce that?
Okay, yeah, as far as I, we designed the building for a two-story. The entire building is a one-hour rating. So the walls, you know, everything associated with the, the building itself is a one-hour rating. So it has a fire rating to the standard building. The ceiling, which is between the second floor and the attic space, also has a one-hour rated ceiling. So that is a requirement by the building code that if you put, you know, an attic in there, you're gonna have a one-hour rated ceiling. And so, yes, there is fire protection by the building code standards for the attic space.
Okay, nothing additional over and above what the building code requires for those areas?
Just for what's required, yes.
Thanks.
Chairman, I have a question. If, if the fire were to break out in the attic, that would then trigger the alarms in the livable space for those sprinklers to come on?
No.
The sprinkler heads are underneath the ceiling.
They have a part in sprinklers?
The concern, yeah, the concern with the attic is if you had a car fire, it gets up in the sauce and it gets in there. In theory, the code requires a fire stop, so you would break the big area. But it has been shown in, in, you know, angle where the whole building was done, four hours, there were the holes in the sheetrock in the attic, so it would spread through the whole attic. So that, that was the concern that's always been raised. How do you handle that? And I understand, and I, I agree with you. It's a total different system. There's a cost to it, absolutely. So that's the balancing act here is, I don't know how you cover an attic with a, a wet system. I agree with John 100%. You can't do it. You gotta put a dry system on it. So the other solution is what the code says, is just chopping it up with sheetrock everywhere, breaking the space up so that you don't have a big open space for the fire to run.
So at the beginning, so how, how did the board require something about New York and New Jersey?
Because they had markings on the variances, so to grant the variances, the heightened public safety was used as one of the reasons for granting the variances.
No, we, we didn't have any party variance, and the only variances we had unrelated to the, the routine wall height and the maximum sign height. I don't see how you can have those little variances that nothing to the building and impose us to go higher than the fire, so that, that's, I'm ready to write the resolution. That's all we asked for. You know, some couple of design lawyers with respect to the size of the sidewalk and the pavement thickness.
Yeah, it's, it's always difficult, Chris, when we act in this situation. What we need is, is if, if we wanna do this, we need a solution within the building code in order for us to be able to say, okay, you put in this system, and that includes some kind of system for the attic. I don't know that, that it's reasonable for us to withhold our, our modification of this because we want it.
I think it's, it sounds like when, was the part that was reached was, we left it up to their discretion. And so in their discretion, the attic was not considered an occupied space.
Correct.
Right, am I correct? And so, and we left it up to you to decide how to deal with it. So I, I don't think there's a question here that you're meeting code, you're going above code. Your understanding of it or in your discretion and by professionals, you did not have to do the attic. It's not an occupied space. It's not an occupied space or an occupied space that required it. So I'm not quite sure. It's pretty cut and dry. We left the discretion up to you and you're still meeting, going above code. I don't see that as a problem there. Yeah. I mean, I would love to have every attic sprinkled and things, but according to New Jersey Building Code, the fire breaks are enough.
And our ordinance doesn't require any additional?
No, we don't. We have never put it into an ordinance, so.
So my own feeling is that I think this board has done a fairly good job of getting additional protection for the new construction that we've had. And in some cases, I think we've pushed the envelope. Some cases, we can't, you know. And here, I, my own feeling is, they haven't provided all the testimony. I think you have more testimony.
I do, because I wanted to focus on, you know, when we had a little bit back of four children in public care, and we talked about minimal costs. And I wanted to let you understand how much additional cost the applicant has already committed to. And it's significant. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think we should.
Yeah, I don't know that we can consider that. However, I myself am going to consider the fact that the applicant agreed to enhance the thirteen R system. And I think that's a major step in the right direction. So, any other questions?
I have a quick one. Tom, when you talked about you may have some potential modifications in the attic, running cables or things like that. Do you guys inspect that, inspect the penetrations for being airtight and things like that when that happens?
I'll have the next witness, the construction.
Okay, all right.
I agree. No parking variance, just the routine.
We exceeded the parking.
Yeah, they didn't roll in that parking.
Ran through the resolution.
We banked some of the parking. One last question. Are the addics accessible from the units or is it just a common attic space?
The architect would have answered that.
Okay. I shouldn't have asked that before.
Yeah, the, you know, the building code requires that from every unit that there is an attic access. In case of fire, the firemen can come in. It's a lock, so nobody else can get up in there. But the firemen can come and open it up and then they can fight the fire in the attic space.
So there'd be no storage of individual?
Yeah, so that's why it's a lock. It's an access panel that's required by the building code. But yet, if you put an access panel in for a tenant, they're going to try to get up there, you know, so it's locked. But the fire department has access to getting up there to fight a fire. And there's one required for each where the draft stopping is. So if you have a segment here, there's an attic access for this area of the fire, you know, separation. And then there's also more there. So yes, there is attic access. But it's only accessible by, for the fire department.
So we won't have Christmas trees and Barbie dolls and other stuff in our addics now. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any others?
Okay, we'll bring up the last witness. I'm sorry, John, real quick, just to clarify, eighty-four, so that was prepared by John's office? Correct. Okay, so Christian, you are already sworn in. Can you just get aboard your background and your role and your name?
I'm Christian Bastardi, spelled B-A-S-T-A-R-D-I, Terms Construction Technology Corporation.
And you're responsible for the construction of this particular project?
Yes.
Okay. And so, we already established that the system design is an NFPA thirteen R with additional heads. So for this specific project, what is a construction cost increase for the additional heads that have been designed or is it presently reflected on construction plans?
Ninety thousand dollars.
And then there was an additional hydrant and a loop water system that the applicant also agreed during, I guess, resolution compliance that fire marshal had asked, or fire official had asked us for?
Yes, the fire marshal asked that each of our, however, some kinds are familiar with it, but the approved designers, when you had the water main, just running along the drive, which parallels Kirby. The fire marshal asked us to loop down each of the individual drives. So there's four drives that had to be looped, along with fire hydrants at each end. So we added, might have been five hydrants and over a thousand something in the year of water line. And that additional cost was another one hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Okay. And then what additional components would have to be incorporated to the plans to accommodate additional sprinkler heads in the addics of the residential buildings where none are presently shown now? What exactly do we have to do?
Sure. So as John testified to, it's a separate pipe system comprised of galvanized pipe, special sprinkler heads. There'll be a dry valve as well as an air compressor to air pump through the system.
Okay. Have you obtained any cost estimates for these additional components to accommodate the sprinkler heads in the attic?
Yeah, our fire sprinkler contractor did a layout and priced it. And it was a cost of six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per all fifteen buildings. And then the duration of the project would also be increased by one month and that'd be an additional forty thousand. So a total of six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And then with the dry system?
So, yeah. And then on top of that, there is annual maintenance costs on those valves and compressors that are some of the parts. So for the entire complex, the applicant would be looking at additional twenty-six thousand dollars per year just to maintain all of those. And because it is a compressor and valves that have to be tested, they actually have a life expectancy of between eight to fifteen years. So over the given life of the building, which we would consider to be a thirty-year building, you know, the last longer, but in terms of replacement cost, thirty-year building, these components would have to be replaced anywhere from two to three times over the life of that building. That additional cost would be somewhere between three hundred and ninety thousand and five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. And you consider these costs to be minimal cost additions?
No. And just for reference, the sprinkler contract with the enhanced thirteen R system as currently imposed is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you're talking about more than doubling it on the added attic sprinklers as well as the lifetime of the maintenance of this.
And just for the record, I just handed out what I would mark as A five. Which is just a summary of the additional costs associated with sprinkling in the addics, which also includes what the applicant already agreed to add from our original approval at request of the fire official. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'll mark that as A five.
Yeah.
And then there was a question by one of the board members with respect to whether or not, I guess, somebody puts cable up in the attic or bring some extra stuff for their particular unit, how does that work?
Sure. So unlike most of your, for your apartment complexes that you guys have in town, which are multi-story and share common corridors and things like that, these apartment buildings have single entrances up to the units. And in order to run from, say, one side of the building to the other side of the building, you would actually have to go in each tenant's spaces and go up to the attic. There's no way to just go straight through it. So all the buildings themselves are going to be pre-wired for cable. They'll have some extra connects here and there to pull things to different spots. But if someone actually had to go through each and every one and say, pull something up in the attic, they would have to have someone go behind them to, you know, patch up any of that sheetrock as well as any penetrations through walls. All the walls have fire rings. All of the electrical boxes through the walls are special fire buddy outlets. And so it's, you know, there's fire rings on the apartment. You can't get into the walls unless first. So it's, you know, you can't just start punching holes everywhere. It's basically about, it's all of the hour rating of the structure of it. So the applicant obviously would be responsible to make sure that if they have to go into the tenant's apartment to do something for another tenant, it would be properly patched up.
Does that address your question?
Yeah, basically, just trying to make the best out of a substandard situation, I guess. Or not substandard, but maybe less than eye disguises.
I had a question. Are there going to be any electrical outlets or lights in the attic space?
No. No. My fact, we know our duct penetrations have fire dampers in them as well. So if you have a grill in the ceiling, that has a fire damper. So if there's a fire, it closes and shuts in one hour right there. I have no mechanical equipment in the attic here. Everything is down below the ceilings.
Okay. Any other questions? This time, I will open it up to the public for questions or comments. Any public comment will close the public session. I think four considerations tonight is not the cost. But what you thought you agreed to, what the board thought you agreed to, and the reality of what you're required to do by code and what you are doing. I am personally satisfied at this point that we can eliminate the attic as part of the unoccupied spaces. I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
I just have a question. Is that for just this project? Will we do this? Will we amend this? It's just that definition of unoccupied spaces and not having the attic included? That's just with this particular project?
The way that I would recommend, if the board decides to grant the request to the applicant, there's a couple of different requests, but I think at the end of the day, this should be an amendment to the condition. And a condition should be amended to remove the reference to unoccupied and indicate that they're going to specifically install an NFPA thirteen R with additional sprinklers in the closets and bathrooms as outlined on exhibit A four.
In the past, we've said that thirteen R enhanced. And then the enhancement is based on the testimony tonight or the documents or what it answers to.
I just didn't want that definition floating out there.
And I think we'll never use that word again. And we will clarify much more specifically what exactly is going to happen. You know, certainly, there can be an agreement among an applicant and the board. And variances, as Mike had indicated, there may be some instances where that would go towards the granting of a variance if, let's say, there was a height request or, you know, FAR or something relating to it. So that would certainly be open for that interpretation at that appropriate time. You're not creating a precedent by doing what you're doing. You're just amending the condition to specify exactly what is the applicant's requirement.
I'd like to throw out there that, as with the restaurant applicant, my understanding that the code change starts from March first. So they got their applications in, but if we can get something to the construction office to speed the process up, waiting for a resolution to be memorialized, we'll maybe push it for forty-five days over the March deadline. But the March deadline is, I think they submitted plans using the current code, but you can't use the current code after March first. You have to use whatever.
The new code.
The new code. So I'm just trying to.
That's building code or fire code?
It's the building code, the NJUCC. So I'm just trying to think out loud to anticipate if the zone, the construction office says, I have nothing on this.
So they just need to get in before March, basically?
I think they have.
Yeah, we've actually submitted for permits on all of our codes, including the hand sprinklers that we've.
Right. Chris, I think it's in and it's all on hold right now.
Oh, okay.
So the question again becomes, how do you get them off hold and what paperwork? Should the board grant that the addics are not included, just the enhanced thirteen R? I'm just throwing it out there, so I'm trying to avoid drama in two or three weeks on, we don't have anything in writing on the construction office regarding this issue.
So we need just to send a letter saying we need this amendment to the construction office, is what you're recommending?
Yeah, I'm saying, yes, if we can, you know, get something, if Karen can do something for the five.
Yeah, we dropped the transcript, dropped the minutes based on those, we can.
What I don't want is the resolution memorialized comes through the construction department on March third, and then we have drama saying we couldn't act on it before we get this. I'm trying to avoid, we literally have three weeks. They're there, but they're not acting on it. My understanding until this is, I guess, resolved is where we're at.
Yeah, I've told the rate issue pending this.
Right.
They've done their review other than this.
Okay, so let's get this done.
So same way. I mean, we can indicate the basis on the transcript and the video, this is what happened. So they can go ahead and the board has no objection to them proceeding prior to the memorialization of the resolution.
Yeah. If the applicant's comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, once you act, you're going to take action today. That's the date of the action. The resolution is just memorializing it, so it needs to be fine.
Anybody else?
I would like to move this.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Karen, a question. We have several board members that were not part of the original discussion and resolution on this.
We do, that's correct.
Mr. Broome is in his first year, and I'm not sure, but Mr. Kreis is.
Your heart was in here.
I wasn't in nineteen.
I think I recall someone. Yeah. And Mr. Akins, I believe, as well.
Trying to see.
So it would be a majority of those voting.
Correct.
And just for the record, I'm outside of the two-hundred foot by about twenty or twenty-five feet. So I am eligible to participate in both.
The copy of the resolution that I have does not have the building. I have it done. It's yours. Rosinski, Sullivan, Kabura, Adair, Atkins, Preska, Cleveland, Attucks and other.
It's the most of us, I think.
So I should be in there too, right?
You were there. You were here when you came for the resolution.
You were quoting.
You saw it at the store and you were definitely here.
That's five years ago, folks. That's asking a lot of us.
You signed the resolution.
I just want to be sure that.
I know what you're asking.
So everybody, everybody in the council room and, 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 John, you didn't apparently weren't here with the residential was memorialized?
He signed it though.
And he voted, and he voted on the initial, so he did.
He definitely wasn't here for it.
Okay, so everybody except council?
Except you. Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosinski?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Attucks?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, we have memorialization of the residents. Okay, has everyone had a chance to book the resolution?
I wish you have. You said it online, right?
I have some too, if I did.
Yeah, and we've got just two minor changes or modifications that Mike recommended that we can place on the record and I can do after the fact. So we recall at the last meeting, we did a vote. We voted, everyone voted on the resolution. And the vote indicated that the condition was not substantial condition that would have changed the vote. However, with the time the resolution was drafted, there were some questions. As to language, we went back, we discussed it. And I think that this revised resolution accurately depicts what the board discussed. Open to suggestions, comments. The only two changes would be, if we look at condition number two, which revises condition number thirteen of the resolution, the second to last sentence that ends with safety requirements. At the end of that, we will add, and the developer shall bear any costs of the same as required by the municipal and U.S. law. And then, condition number three, at the end, we would say, including but not limited to. So basically, what that paragraph says is, everything that we're not changing here stays in effect. But just pointing out, condition number eight on page five of the original resolution, which states that the approval is contingent and subject to the applicant obtaining final clearance from the DEP for the environmental cleanup and saying must be approved for the proposed residential and park land use by the DEP and obtained prior to the issuance of building permits. That was the condition. Now, my understanding, or actually, I shouldn't even say that. I've seen nothing indicating I wasn't here at that point in time, whether, what proof has been provided by the DEP. I'm not one hundred percent sure yet.
Well, no, the DEP has direct oversight as opposed to an LS RP on this because of a lot of fact, uh, reasons. I do believe there's something in the file from the DEP approving the construction of the forty hains. I've had comment that since this lot's been conveyed to the borough, typically get a sign off, note of their action or something from an LS RP, saying that it's good so that the children can play on it. I, I don't.
Is that item sixteen on page four, the real report?
It's, yeah. So my report, I, I said, listen, in the abundance of caution, it's typical done on most parcels conveyed to the boroughs, DAS I done, and to find out and make sure that the land is appropriate for the children in this case to play on. It was tied in with hains, so I don't know that clearly says that that lot is basically below the standards. And Kara asking this question, I'm gonna have to go through the file. I know there's language from DEP from the apartment buildings. This separate lot is a.
Do they list all, in the DEP report, they don't list all the lots and blocks of the whole?
I would assume it does.
I would hope so.
It, it just came up four or five years ago, when the, when the DEP approval came out for the buildings. I just don't recall where it stands.
So we just need to find the DEP.
See, the DEP, that it's, that it's lacking, saying it's not clear. I'm saying the developer should produce some documentation.
They were required to at the time of the initial resolution, and again, they continue to be required to do that. But since this is something that the borough was ultimately going to be dedicated to, we wanna make sure that that's not missed. But again, that does not impose any additional obligation on the developer, that they did not have.
That they didn't already have.
Exactly. It's just.
A reminder.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mike, I remember, at least I think I remember a lot of discussion on the southeast corner of that lot. It was in a hot spot. And there was, there was a restriction, am I remembering?
Yes, it was.
There was a restriction that they couldn't do anything there but parking.
It was required.
That was, that was for the pillars.
Yeah.
He's talking.
Now, the lot where the park will be.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that was ever a discussion.
I think, Mayor, you're going back to the Lico site, and the popping tree shown there because there was a groundwater pump. What I'm saying is, the focus has always been on the big lot.
Not the fairies side.
Not this, this is a basically residential lot. It just comes along with, with, with the lot.
I think they probably, I mean, again, I'm speaking completely off the cuff without seeing anything. I don't know why you'd go to the DEP for one without going for everything, but it's, again, so you have to. Requirement that they have to provide, it was a condition of prior resolution, not changing anything.
Okay. So we're not taking any risk?
No, no.
No, what Kara's saying, they have to comply and show that.
Give us the information and then.
If it's not there, they still have to provide it.
Yes.
So who, who can vote on this here?
So this I do have. This. Ernie, this is not here. Sullivan, Adair, Rozinski, Cleveland, I don't know. Decker and Peabody can vote too.
Okay, so somebody wanna move it?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
This will remove the conditions up for the playground from the building lot, so they can get a C O.
Yes.
Rificating to units with, with the performance, sub-performance obligations.
One hundred and twenty percent of whatever. Right, which is the L U L.
And the deadline still remains, that would be given.
March.
Right.
It would be either next year.
Right. And it also removes me, even though I did the review letter. Which.
So why is that?
We, we didn't actually remove him.
Yeah, there's no, no, there's no mention here that we thirteen.
We left the option open.
To who?
Yeah, but I did a six-page review letter, but it's already done.
Right.
I just, Mike, there's nothing to argue about.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go.
Okay.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes. Kara, you will communicate with the attorney for the applicant.
Mike and I will work together to do something.
Yes. All right.
ARB.
Yeah, we have ARB. The Somerset Hotel wants to replace the terracotta roof with chins asphalt shoes.
It had terracotta roof in here?
Yeah, it's still in the front.
It looks like it.
Just on the, just on the porch.
I thought it was just on the porch, right?
It's, it's all around.
The ramp around porch has a terracotta, correct?
It's not that, it's not the main roof.
Yeah.
The main roof I thought was, what was it? The main roof was terracotta?
It's a. Porch, porch. Maybe terra. It doesn't look like.
I don't believe that the terracotta was the original roof anymore.
Yeah.
Why would people put terracotta on the roof? I mean, it's, I mean, it's not normally done. That's why I think it probably.
Looks right.
I know, I think it's, I think it probably was the original, is because no one would have done it. It's too expensive.
Yeah.
Well, I do know that he's been piecing it together by scavenging.
No, 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 I'm not, yeah, I, I just, the asphalt roof is kind of, like a gray asphalt roof. It's not my choice of color for when you go in from a terracotta.
He's gonna try to, he's gonna try to match the red color as much as possible.
He's showing us.
Well, it's. Yes, he said he's gonna try to match the, the redish color. Anyway, someone wanna move it?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rozinski?
No.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Broome?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Mr. Creskey?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Attucks?
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
If we adjourn, public comment.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I invite you, if you haven't been to the Baker and Taylor site in the last week's drive-by, the buildings have gone, so if you wanna see it, we should fund for a while.
Been looking at it for fifty years.
In my nightmares.
I, I see it every day. But really, they, they're about to start the renewal, building's just about done. You got two weeks or so to wave goodbye to. It's looking good.
Okay, so before we adjourn, I will open it up to the public.
Seeing all the public pressings to the next.
Not much public.
Ernie, can I thank the members of the planning board that attended the zoning board meeting in Bridgewater last week for their time and patience. And they finished about two-thirds of the first, of the first expert's testimony. So we're probably looking at many more, many more meetings. But again, if you had, if you do take the time to come, thank you. And if you have time to get on March seventh.
Is that the next meeting?
And then probably March twenty-first, then whatever, the two-week cycle is.
We'll give you an update the next meeting, what's going on. But on March seventh, we're gonna be taking questions of the first witness.
Assuming he finishes his testimony.
Right.
Is this the tractor?
No, this is the site civil guy.
Site civil.
There's still four or five more witnesses to give testimony.
But we'll add, Summer Bill was very well represented, not just from this body, but from several members.
Was Bridgewater represented? I'm just curious. Were, were the people from Bridgewater that were there?
They were holding a bus.
I would tell you about.
They did.
From Oliver Glen, yes, they did. Yes, they did.
I would say thirty percent of the audience was someone else, sixty percent of the experts.
Okay, good, good. So there's a lot of opposition.
It was packed. Almost every seat was filled.
All right.
And they commented that they were taking it seriously because they hadn't had an outside attorney come in quite a long time, really knew what to do.
They had filled the room though.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, it was filled, yeah.
It wasn't.
They didn't have to give it.
It wasn't a storm.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. All is favored, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Thank you.